... session of the Weatherford City Council. It is six thirty-one, Tuesday, September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. If you would please join me and Steve Bryant from Brownstone Church for the invocation.
Thank you. Would you pray? Lord, I thank you for this evening. I thank you for the opportunity that we have tonight to do business for the city of Weatherford. I thank you for the men and women who are here and are qualified. I thank you for the good health that they have. I thank you for protecting their families during this time, and I pray that you would give wisdom to them tonight in every decision that is made. We ask all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. I would like to call this meeting to order and announce we do have a quorum. We are missing our Honorable Mayor Paul Pascal. Would you please join me with Jeff Robinson for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flags?
You would join me for the Pledge of the United States Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, the one state under God, one indivisible.
We're going to move the items up a little bit differently, and we're going to go to item five, Presentations and Proclamations. Item five A, Update from County Judge on Use of Half-Cent Sales Tax. Welcome.
I can't take this off. It's been about a year since we've talked about the consumption of the half-cent sales tax that we get through the county, throughout the county. And that number, as we have now gone through, is about one-fifth of our entire budget. So I understand, I was in your shoes for twenty years, basically as a municipality. I understand the importance of, not only to you, the half-cent sales tax, what it was created for. And when we left the last time that we had talked, it was actually my suggestion, I think Mayor Pascal, that we have kind of tried to keep a scorecard here and kind of have these things on a regular meeting basis to see, depending how we're going and how we're tracking and how we're using this money. And the truth of it is, again, I'm going to be as transparent as I can. That is a part of our general fund. It does go into our general fund of how we operate. But that said, one of the things in changing the culture of the Commissioners' Court in the county is focusing on high-wage shop ground and promoting and looking at how we can go from a retail base but to more of a higher-wage base and getting more value on the ground to get our taxes down. And so that's one of the things we're doing. Keeping a scorecard since the last time we've talked, I'm going to be very honest with you, has been very difficult with the COVID-19 situation that we've had because my office has really turned into more of a command center to operate with, along with the task force with City Weatherford. And so when you lose four thousand people, your economy changes, obviously with that. So my point to you is, is it's going to be very difficult to give you a scorecard of where that money has gone, other than right now trying to focus on the health and safety of our community. And that's what we have done. And so the direction of where we're going right now in terms of economic development, we heard a proposal this week from East Parker County, talking about the growth of one of the developments that's going on out there. That's unprecedented. We didn't used to do that with the county. We're doing that a lot more now. We have a three-eighty-one agreement that we did approve and authorize to do that. We continue to operate from a standpoint focusing on economic development, working with the Economic Development Council. So what I'm doing is not probably giving you the direction and path, but when you're dealing with a pandemic and the focus is on that, it's very difficult to focus on where we're going and using that half-cent sales tax and focus on the economic development side of it. But really, that's where we're at today, and I'm really here to answer your questions if you have any that you would like to ask me.
I'd probably start by saying, you know, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes in any way. Wouldn't want to be in any of our shoes, or citizens' shoes, through this whole COVID mess. It's been a mess on everybody. It's been difficult. Nobody had a playbook for this thing, so nobody really knew, you know, what to expect or how to go with it. And it's been a learning curve for everybody, so.
Right.
I applaud you guys for doing the job y'all have done, in the times you've done. For me, I don't really have a whole lot of questions about what this past year looked like because I really didn't expect a lot of information because of the year we've had. But prior to this meeting, at five-thirty, we had an opportunity. We had a TERS program, a TERS meeting for our downtown, both corridors, east and west, and north and south, and a plan for redoing, revitalizing downtown, which fits really well with you guys because you guys know y'all, y'all own the square from storefront to.
Right.
Storefront down there. So there's opportunities to talk about what we're going to do from here on out. So we went through COVID, we went through all the mess. We don't know what's going to happen over the next year, but we could plan and work towards doing something. And so for me, it's really important. You come back this year, we understand what happened with this last year, but did we make some kind of plan? And there's some really low-hanging fruit, in my opinion, that's there that doesn't dip into that half-cent. So becoming a member of the TERS and working with us in different programs like that really doesn't even affect that half-cent, but it still gives you bang for the buck in the same intent. So I would just like for us to continue to start talking through some of those, and if you have any other ideas with your partner, I'd be interested in hearing those as well.
Well, to your point, also, as you refer to a playbook, it's very, it's got so many different complexities to it, from the funding. You know you're going to get audited, and so what we do is disperse, instead of dispersing money out to respective cities or ISDs, what we do is disperse out the partnership and collaboration with them that they turn in receipts of what they need that is qualified. As we get audited, we know we're going to win the audit. So there's some complexities here, and right now, where we are today, and there's been an impact in our nursing homes. We obviously know that. We've intensified those things. And so the focus, again, is going to continue to be, is the containment strategy for minimizing the impact and spread of COVID-19. That's why, obviously, we're all wearing masks here. So we're going to continue to focus on that. I will tell you this, that there's a lot of activity with economic development even still going on right now because developers look at this as not a fire sale, but that land has digressed a little bit with enough people out of work. They're going to look at this and sees as an opportunity to come out. And so we're working with several different companies that are going to be looking at and are looking at Parker County today. So hopefully, we have some better, each one get some things signed. But I also have a dedicated person that's in my office that works in economic development. So to the point of, can I actually give you a measuring stick with what we've been through this year? And I think we can all agree that through one conversation or another, there's been a lot of sensitive issues that we're dealing with, and still are, actually. But the direction is really, if I'm sitting in your chair, and I did for a very long time, is the direction that we're going is really the key focus here today. We're dealing with a pandemic today, but where is the focus? And where are we going with the utilization of the half-cent sales tax that we're getting from the respective municipalities? And I think we're going in the right direction with that. Well, I have two or three things, and I understand it's been a difficult year, but it's been a difficult year for all the cities. But I still would like to know what the county is going to do to increase spending going forward because cooperation in economic development, those are great things. Those are things that we should do regardless. But when I look at the fact that the citizens of Weatherford, when they get their tax bill every year, they pay the lateral road taxes, as well as the same county taxes that everybody that lives in the county pays. But then on top of that, they pay City of Weatherford taxes. And then the residents of the county have the ability to come in and use the services of the City of Weatherford that the citizens of the City of Weatherford pay for. Right. So to me, I would like to see the county come up with a plan where they can show us that they're going to spend more dollars inside the City of Weatherford. Because if not, I mean, a blunt way of saying it is the residents of Weatherford are paying the way for the residents of the county. Sure, and you make, and you make a good point. And so it's been a difficult year, but I really would like to see more than help with economic development and help with cooperation, but literally dollar spent, cooperation on the TERS that has financial impact with very, very little cost to the county. It's just, it's almost a, I mean, there's really no cost. It's just a loss of a little bit of future income that would be a way of showing that the county is concerned about growth inside the city and helping out directly economically. So I guess what, it's not really a question, is that the next time we meet, I really would like to hear where we're going to spend more dollars in the city. Well, let me address that just real quick here. You're talking two things, as you mentioned, TERS. I don't want to jump into that too much because that's a very complex, where we need an understanding. I'm not in favor of a blanket TERS, just to go out and blanket an area, rather than understanding what's going to be going there, what develops is going to go there. But you hit on something that's very important, is the road and bridge of each of these commissioners, which is, we've struggled to keep our roads because of the Tier Two that happened, kept on system with the county, where you're no longer annexing these out and taking these away. We're having to continue to maintain these. And so these commissioners are struggling with the number of dollars to do just in the county alone. Your point's well taken, and in many of the training sessions that I've gone to, counties work with cities, which we do, but, you know, whether you give the material or there's a labor discount, or however that works, I agree with you that that collaboration needs to continue to improve because, one, the half-cent sales tax does dictate that, mandate that discussion. But we, in trying to keep up with the roads right now, it's been a struggle for us because in Precinct One alone, I think there's over sixty subdivisions going in right now. You have developers fix the roads, but they tear roads up going in. And that number, that amount of development right now that's happening in Parker County is not just Precinct One in Springtown, but it's also East Parker County, and you also got going out west with Brock in much parts of City of Weatherford. So we're struggling right now within the cities of trying to do that, council member, and so we're going to continue to do that. Your point's well taken. Bring it back. And that's the lateral road, but there's also just the regular straight county tax that all the. And that represents about fifteen to sixteen percent of your total, which is about an average. I think we were about seventeen, eighteen percent last year, and we've lowered that. That is lower now than it was before. And that's about a state norm, is about fifteen to sixteen percent of what your overall tax bill is. That doesn't mean we can't do better, but that's where it is currently today. Well, I understand, but it's still hundreds and thousands of dollars to different homeowners, depending on the value of their home. And a small, a tiny fraction of what the county collects from city residents comes back into the city. Sure. And that's the part that I just feel like we need to see a difference in, so. Understood.
Did you have any other questions?
Are there other areas? I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm new, but I think county has participated, like with the library, through some funding. Are there other areas like that where we could maybe see some more participation from the county?
Well, you have the animal shelter, which we're a very big partner with you on that. For the first time in over twenty years, we raised, last year, when we had a six-million-dollar fund deficit, we still raised the dollars that we gave for the library on our contribution, which has not been done in over twenty years. We did not do that this year, just simply because of what y'all already know. While sales tax are up, the county has many different funding mechanisms with revenue, which is our court system, and obviously with that, you know, with COVID, those numbers are way down. So we didn't, we weren't able to do that this year. So, but other opportunities, yes, that will continue.
Well, I get the, and I appreciate that the times that we're in, they're very difficult, and nobody has a playbook on how to navigate the waters. And I appreciate the participation that the county and the city manager have done to keep and ensure the safety of this city. That half sales tax represents approximately five million dollars.
Correct.
That's a huge number, and I personally would like to see a plan, a very ma, I'm a very mathematical person, so a very mathematical plan that shows the dollars that come back into the City of Weatherford to better the City of Weatherford. I also would like to see more county participation in at least Tier Zone Two because that is downtown. You're present there. You're a big part of our downtown. And I would like to see us partner together to make it the best that it can be. But I really had anticipated and understand that COVID came and we all were unprepared for what it turned out to be a huge issue. But next time, I would really like to see a roadmap that is mathematically designed to show this five million dollars went into the City of Weatherford in this way. However, you know, you design that, you're the judge, and however it is you design that, and we hope to get the commissioners on board with that. But it really, we need to start showing the citizens of Weatherford, because that's our responsibility.
Sure.
That they are getting benefit from that half-cent sales tax because that is huge dollars to me.
It is.
Five million dollars is huge to me. And I want to be able to show the citizens, and anyone who asks me, what has the county done with that five million dollars? And I want to show them all the good things that are happening in the City of Weatherford.
Right.
Anyone have any? Well, thank you very, very much for being here, and we look forward to seeing you next year.
We will have more of these, and I would also propose just kind of a closing statement, possibly maybe even a joint council commissioners' meeting, or even a committee established and working together with set council members, myself with Mayor Pascal, designated people from the Commissioners' Court of Council, to start some of those discussions. When we come back, we can have some of these quantitative and qualitative type discussions to be a little more specific about what you're asking about.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will go back to item number four, Items of Community Interest. Mr. Hothop?
Ask Brian, excuse me, ask Brian Lang to come forward. So was able to see a presentation that he had done recently at the Sheriff's Posse, and he's going to tell you about an exciting event that they have planned that's going to be coming to Weatherford. It's really cool. It's a Christmas-themed event. And so when he came and did the presentation, he thought it'd be a perfect opportunity to come to the council and really talk about something that's going to be really cool and a new event that's coming, and something that Weatherford's really never seen. And anyway, I'll turn it over to Brian and let him tell you about it. And you know how to navigate through it?
I do. I'm going to turn my timer on. I've got five minutes, so I'm going to try to make this fast. So thank you, council members, and thank you for letting me present. We have an event here that hopefully is going to excite you folks. Peerless Production Group is based right here in Weatherford, Texas. And a little bit about our company, we're in the entertainment production business. We create immersive Christmas shows, holiday-themed events and attractions. And these are extraordinary shows that are consumer-driven, but also have massive impact into communities. During the times, you know, especially difficult times like right now through COVID, we've had to kind of pivot and change a little bit about some of our shows. But this year, we're presenting three new shows in the Metroplex, which we've selected Weatherford and Parker County as being one of those locations. And, you know, our mission is to get, create these experiences that are memories that will last with our children and kids and grandmas and grandpas for a long time. I'm going to tap here. Our history of success, so you know a little bit about our company. In two thousand and ten, we started to transition into more holiday-themed shows. One of the attractions that we've been with and worked involved with is with the Gaylord Texan and the Marriott's. And as you know, you might know what the ICE event is. And we've been operating there and helped them expand that into a world-class event. And today, we're still operating there at the Gaylord Texan. And we've operated in Opera Land. We've also in the Palms in Florida, Nashville. We will be in there for the next five years, and we're going to be expanding. Obviously, things are going to transition a little bit. And I will tell you, this year, is the first year in sixteen years, we will not have ICE. But we are bringing a Warner Brothers experience. You're hearing this first from me. But we're expanding the footprint there. Actually, it's going to be growing. We're going to be adding another forty thousand square feet indoors and sixty thousand square feet outdoors to make it a new event. But that just gives you a little bit of the history about who we are. You know, our credits are, again, are things like Gaylord, Six Flags. We have a lot of work that we've actually done with iconic brands like Dr. Seuss, DreamWorks Peanuts. And we incorporate that into our events to make it more immersive for our children and brand loyalty. I'm going to kind of skip through some of these slides for you because we have too many. What we're going to create for Parker County and Weatherford is this holiday one for Parker County and Weatherford is that we're going to design a family-friendly, unique holiday experience. It's a multi-year, five-year growth plan. Each year, we'll be adding new attractions that, as it continues to grow and expand, we're going to expand the experience. This year, you know, it's going to be a drive-through Christmas light show. We're going to keep it safe. We're going to keep it simple. We're going to protect our loved ones and keep them in their vehicles. But we're going to give them about a mile and a half experience where they're going to experience a Christmas show that they've never seen before in this part of the country. We will continue to develop and expand it. We'll produce a terrific ROI for the community, and I'll show you a little later in some of the slides on how that works. There's going to be, like I said, three different shows in the Metroplex. Frisco in Collin County at Dr. Pepper Park will be one. The other one will be here in Weatherford at the Sheriff's County Posse, and the other one will be in Decatur at the Posse Ground there. The show is going to be called Radiance. All three shows will be branded as Radiance. It's a holiday light spectacular. Each one will be a little more custom. And this is just a little photo glimpse of a light show that we did. It'll be RBG LED immersive lights, tunnels and things that they'll go through this year. And the theme for Weatherford and Parker County is going to be Radiance at the Ranch. We're going to keep it a cowboy, historical, western theme the next five years. This event will start November the eleventh and go through January the third. There will be seven weeks. My time is up, so I'm going to hurry up. And I'm going to leave information with the city here and act for everyone so if they'd like to have more information, they can see that. This is the five-year plan right here. This is the event growth, drive-through light show, year one, year two, RBG. We'll expand the lights into more advanced line, add ice skating rinks, snowball toss, snow tubing hills. Three, we'll be adding carousel gingerbread. The goal is to get the folks out of the cars, get them into an immersive way that they could spend two to three hours with their children, experiencing things. We really want them out of the cars. This plan is developed to do that. And it continues to grow as we grow, and we've had a lot of experience of seeing these grow very rapidly. We think this market is a phenomenal market to capture about a sixteen to eighteen-county area that will drive people to our county and to our community. And we'll be sharing more data a little later on about how that could impact our community. So thank you for the time, and I'll be around to answer any of the questions.
So we were certainly excited about the opportunity of Brian picking Weatherford for this experience and really saw that this is the type of event that's not being hosted and a great opportunity for, to draw people to the area. And that's one of the things we found with a lot of Christmas-related things, is it's a huge draw for people to come in, not only out of the Metroplex, but out of a lot of western counties. So there's going to be a lot of positive sales tax growth as a result of that. A lot of people in town that hopefully will be spending their dollars. So anyway, we just wanted to bring him forward and talk about this really cool event that's going to be happening here for at least the next five years.
Hopefully for a long time.
Yeah.
Well, I got to say, I'm really excited for year four. I want to try bumper cars on ice. That just sounds like.
That'll be exciting.
Well, thank you very much, and we look forward to having you here and continuing the partnership.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Forward to it.
Okay, item six, Consent Agent Items. Is there anyone who wants to pull anything off? Or can we have a motion for six A through six H? I have a motion from Kevin Cleveland and a second from Matt Tiscus. If you would please vote on your screens now. That carries unanimously. Item seven, seven A, Hold a Public Hearing and Consider Adoption of Ordinance Zero Two Zero Two Zero Dash Five Eight, Updating the Zoning District Map for the City of Weatherford, MCA Two Zero Two Zero Dash Zero 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 Four. Mr. Kettner?
Yes. Counsel, I have, in your packet, you have the complete staff report. This is the second part to our ongoing process of updating the zoning regulations. And this part entails the update of the zoning map, which is outlined in the zoning regulations and which meets the section, or Title Twelve, Chapter Two, Section Twelve Dash Two One Oh One, which allows us to make sure we do a better job in updating those maps on a regular basis so we can track that information better and provide a better service to the citizens in the community. This staff reviewed the changes. We had two full days of opportunities for the public to come in and meet with planners and to visit about the modifications to the zoning maps and based on the zoning regulations that were adopted by the council. And that took place and went before the Planning and Zoning Commission. They also held a public hearing and unanimously approved updating the zoning district map included in your packets. There are several areas that we kind of went through in updating it, the map, and you'll recognize most of those changes in the new zoning districts to create and meet the requirements that we have outlined in the adopted general plan from two thousand and eighteen. And if you have any questions, be glad to answer them.
Any questions before we open the public hearing? Any questions before we open the public hearing? I am opening the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? This ma'am, come forward, please, and state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
I'll let me take a minute. Sue Boyer, 212 West Columbia. On these changes, is it going to change the tax for the people who live there that are being changed? Is it going to affect their, the taxes?
No, zoning does not impact taxes.
Okay, that's what we weren't sure. Several, I had several calls today on it, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming forward. Would anyone else please come forward? If you would, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is John Sabanowicz. My property is at 1701 East Bankhead. And the one thing that I want to object to is that, or propose that any zoning changes should be from today going forward, and any previous zoning that had been affecting properties ought to be grandfathered and stay as they are. For example, if I have a property that's zoned residential, I mean, zoned commercial, and then they're going to, with this new zoning plan, change it to residential, I've lost property value because now I don't have a commercial property. It's now residential. So I would request that with a new zoning plan, any previous zoning ought to be grandfathered and stay the same. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address this issue? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
I have a motion from Kevin Cleveland and a second from Jeff Robinson. If you could please vote on your screens now. That carries unanimously. On to regular agenda items. Item eight A, consider and/or act upon approval of ordinance 02020-52, adopting the city manager's proposed budget for fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021. Ms. Doss?
Good evening, Mayor Proten, members of council, Jessica Doss, Finance Director. So tonight, we'll be asking you to adopt our city manager's FY21 proposed budget. So we started this budget process with an initial presentation on August, followed by a budget work session on August 25th. We did hold one public hearing on the budget on September 8th. So for quick review of the general fund, the proposed budget includes $39.4 million in revenue and $40.3 million in expenses, reducing our fund balance by $873,000. Of our $14.7 million ending fund balance, $587,000 is tied up in our comp absences reserve. $12.4 million is tied up in our 120-day council preferred reserve, leaving an available balance of $1.7 million. We are proposing to end with 142.33 days of working capital. The only adjustment that has been made since our initial presentation and proposal was to include the approved outside funding requests. So with a tax rate of 48.29 cents, our balance, our budget is balanced. We are providing quality and consistent services at a competitive value. We are continuing to reserve funds for our capital needs and demonstrating conservative fiscal management. So at this time, I'll turn it over to you for any questions, comments.
Any questions for Ms. Doss?
No.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Kevin Cleveland and a second from Matt Tiscus. If you could please vote on your screens now. That passes unanimously. Item eight B, consider and/or act upon approval of ordinance 02020-53, adopting the ad valorem tax rate of 48.29 cents per 100 evaluation for the 2020 tax year, 21 fiscal year. Ms. Doss?
Thank you, Mayor Proten, and Council, Jessica Doss, Finance Director. So in conjunction with adopting the annual budget, the city council is required to adopt an ad valorem tax rate. So the FY21 budget is balanced on a tax rate of 48.29 cents, which is 1% lower than our current rate. On August 11th, the council voted on a proposed tax rate of 48.79 cents. However, that rate was not needed to balance the budget. We did have our required hearing on September 8th. So there is specific language that council is required to use to adopt a tax rate. So if it's approved, I have provided the required language on the screen and in the suggested action section of your agenda. So with that, I'll turn it back over to council.
Any questions for Mrs. Doss?
Ready for a motion?
Absolutely.
I move that the property tax rate be decreased by the adoption of a tax rate of 48.29 cents per $100 valuation, which is effectively a 1% decrease in the tax rate. This includes a rate of 33.43 cents for the operations and maintenance of the general fund and 14.86 cents in order to service the city's debt.
Any other discussion before we vote? If you would please vote on your screens now. That carries unanimously. Item eight C, consider naming the new animal medical and surgical center after the Reese Jones Foundation, recognizing their significant contribution, which helped make the shelter's vision a reality. Mr. Deal?
I'm Dustin Deal, Director of Municipal Community Services. In November of 2018, council approved and accepted a grant, a very generous grant, from the Reese Jones Foundation. And that money was going towards the Giving Second Chances Capital Campaign, specifically for our animal medical center that we're hoping to build, or we're actually currently building. Prior to this donation, the Reese Jones Foundation had not given to any organization unless it was a 501(c)(3) organization. However, after hearing our story, they believed in our vision and our track record and decided to make an exception, giving the shelter, or the city of Weatherford, half a million dollars for this project. We would like, or, we would not be in construction right now had it not been for that very generous gift. So with that, as a token of our appreciation, I'm asking council for the privilege of naming the animal shelter, the new animal shelter building that you see up on the screen, after the Reese Jones Foundation. We'll be calling it the Reese Jones Foundation Animal Medical, I'm sorry, the Reese Jones Foundation Medical and Surgical Center. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer that.
I would just like to say thank you to the Reese Jones Foundation for their phenomenal, generous gift in making what has to be the greatest animal medical surgical center in the universe.
Do you know why they opted to go outside of what they normally do to participate in our program?
So honestly, it's, it's a very innovative program that we've gone with here because they, they really value education. They value animal welfare, and both of these, with our partnership with Weatherford College, really caught their interest. And then we've had a pretty remarkable track record, if I do say so, at the animal shelter. So combine all those, and it was a pretty good project to invest some money in, if I do say so.
They've had pretty good leadership down there at the animal shelter.
Thank you.
So do I need to make this a motion? I have a motion from Jeff Robinson and a second from Matt Tiscus. If you would please vote. That carries unanimously. Congratulations, Dustin, and what a great job, and thank you to the Reese Jones Foundation for their phenomenally generous gift.
Thank you.
Item nine, nine A, update, staff reports update regarding progress of the downtown bypass project. Mr. Hughes?
Mayor Proten, members of council, Terry Hughes, Director of Capital Transportation. I do have a little PowerPoint, if I can get it to operate. No, I'm not Ken DeCraig former.
I was about, I was about to say that.
I know exactly what you were saying. I could see it.
You could see it in my eyes.
He is the one person that you can just use over.
That's what I was just going to say. It's safe to say he left an impression on us.
And thanks for the putting up with me in my Craig moment. See that I mentioned him, and now he's coming back. I just wanted to go through our timelines one more time, especially after our actions tonight. This was our original time program that, that I gave you in March. Just to, to go back through it again, we, we, our original dates were early in 2020 when we were going to start. We moved all that or slid it back to get some additional funding. That funding should happen in November now. Once that's cleared, then we will get a letter of approval from the federal government and start a number of these processes. This is not what I want. This is the breakdown that I had given you also with regard to the Phase One of the bypass. And I want to bring your attention, one of the items up there, oh, turns to adoption in April. We slid that back for further negotiations, which you have seen. So that is now moved over to September is done. We're, our still, our target date is sometime in November when the Transportation Commission approves the new tip program, the modifications that include all of this. Just a brief overview of the program. You have the north bypass, which is funded for $16,590,000. Everything is worked out on it as we move forward. The southern bypass, we have budgeted, you may remember from our first meeting, $9,416,000. And when I say budgeted, that's, that's the parameters we put up for right-of-way engineering, construction costs and other things. We will be negotiating what part of that will be paid for through COG and through some grant programs and, and text doc programs. And then we'll come back and say, this is the local match we have to do. So that's why we put together the turns program. Any local commitment, either in a repayment package or whatever is needed, would be paid for by the turns over a 20-year timeframe. Now, remember the turns is a 30-year window, so we're trying to work within that 30-year window with most of the repayment programs that COG wants is a 20-year timeframe. Now, what have we done so far? And I, and you may remember this, we've gone through a, a lot of actions. We've adopted a new thoroughfare plan, which shows our entire bypass loop. We've had conference calls with COG to reclassify some of our roads in town, which was extremely important for getting the actual funding in place. Those are things that we've already done. Coming events, and these are the things that just happened tonight. We finalized the inter-local agreement, which is now done, and we finalized the turns program, project plan and, and funding program by council and the board. Both of those two intertwined with one another. They were extremely important for us to move forward. I can't tell you how important they were. All those timelines could have been really messed up had we not moved forward with that. So again, I thank the council and the board for those actions. So where we are at staff level, we have submitted for an AFA, which is known as an advanced funding agreement with text doc. It is a draft form where we are wrangling out who does what as the project moves forward. We are trying to keep as much control on a local level as possible. While that is good in some ways, it means that we have to conform in other ways to what the federal government wants from us. So a lot of our contracts, just for an instance, when we do a contract for a consulting service, they're going to have to approve that contract before we ever move forward and come back and get you to approve it after we've negotiated the things. So our partner is our partner, and it's not like they're just doling out money, so we're going to have to interact with them. Mr. Marbit, who works in our department, is very good at, at interacting with those folks, and I guess he speaks the same language they do because they, they talk to him more than they do me sometimes. The AFA is critical. We hope to have all of that done by the November timeframe. I can't guarantee that, but that's our, that's what we're shooting for. The AFA will define exactly how our RFQ, which is another acronym for Request for Qualifications for our consultant, why I have some questions out there on, to the right of the November timeframe. All of those things tie together, and we have to work back and forth with them. We've submitted the AFA, and just to tell you how that goes, we submitted it locally, the locals reviewed it, they sent it to the district office, the district reviewed it, and now they've sent it to the division office. It seems a little weird to me that you would go through this process, but everybody gets a chance to look at it. I was just sitting here thinking what that reminded me of, and this is anecdotal, if you don't mind. I watched the movie Midway the other day. In, in Midway, Admiral Nimitz was over on this corner, who's the boss. And some news came in, and it went from one guy to the next guy to the next guy, and each one had to read it and run to the next guy. And it went through like five people before it got to Admiral Nimitz, and he's like six feet away, or 10 feet away. That's kind of what this is. We have to submit all this, and everybody gets a chance to look at it when the boss is just right there, so. That's kind of where we're at. When we start, and some folks have really asked about this, and I want to, as candid as can, we will start with ground survey work, where the surveyors go out, locate all the property lines, all the physical things that could impact. Then we do a preliminary design. Once that preliminary design is in place, or what we refer to as a schematic, then we start the environmental process. And that is the point where we have a lot of interaction with the public. They get to come in. We will have these schematic designs. I remember we had a bunch hung on the wall one time, folks come in, make their comments. We begin to discuss how those impacts work. There will be more than ample time during the environmental process for a lot of the public to come in, view the project, and, and get their input. The environmental process includes noise conditions, noise analysis, how it's going to impact historical properties. There are a whole litany of things that we go through and out. Once that's done, then we will start working with our utilities, try to get those relocated. At the same time, being able to acquire the property that we need, and that has to follow state and federal guidelines. Then we go to what we refer to as PSNE, our plans, specifications and final estimates. We do construction letting and start, start the project. So I underline the environmental process because that is key to where we get a lot of public input with regard to design details. And that's my update.
Does anyone have any questions?
I had, I had two things. Number one, if we could get the presentation emailed to us after we're done.
Yes.
Now the presentation, so we have all that information. Number two, I think you're stressing the importance of communication when you talk about the, the steps it takes to get from one person to the next. And so by the time the decisions are coming to- And so by the time the decisions are coming to us, for us to find we have an agreement or something that we disagree with would be a huge reset because you gotta go back through all these different channels. So I can't stress enough the importance of keeping council informed as we're going through it, because you almost need to understand that council is behind the direction we're going as you're going into these negotiations with HECSD, so that you don't find yourself backing up the process and costing time. So that would be my only encouragement, is making sure. And you're doing a great job. These constant updates have been very helpful.
You know, we had talked early on about maybe doing some memorandums. What we might do is start doing some memorandums, maybe on a monthly basis. When things have happened, I can send those out to you and kind of update you on where we are and what the various elements are. And you can certainly review some of them if you want.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thanks, Terry. I said, thanks, yep.
Item 11, 10, sorry, future agenda items. Does anyone have a future agenda item? Item 11, citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, item 12, adjournment. Wow, couldn't come in fast enough. I have a motion from Matt Tiscus and a second from Kevin Cleveland. If you could please vote on your screens. That passes unanimously.